...of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Will Paul?
Pristine?
Here.
Shipman?
Here.
Reichtner?
Here.
Ister?
Uh... Let's do it. Have an audience comment on any agenda items? Any comment on any that's not much on the agenda? Okay. Jamie, where's Jamie?
Right here.
There you are. You out of the floor.
All right. This evening, we just have to have a quick public hearing about CDBG program income allocation. Because the city earns program income through your housing revolving loan fund, and when you sell properties that the redevelopment authority has demolished on your behalf, we have to then allocate them in a public hearing. We have to give the public a chance to give their opinions on the allocation of those funds. What we have right now is $4,147.50, which I'm suggesting the city allocate to clearance and demolition act areas. Are there any public comment on that allocation? Hearing done? That's all I needed to do. And we're gonna turn this public hearing back to your regular meeting?
Okay, then we're back to the next, back to the virtual meeting. Was it 414750?
Correct.
Okay, new business, resolution adopt Act 90 to participate with county housing. Everyone in front of you has a, uh... What we, what I did here is went through the ordinances we have now, and without 100%, I don't think we need to pass 18 pages of Act 90. So what we did is the resolution reads it, whereas the city of Sundar wants to be in compliance with participating with the Northumberland County Housing Commission, and we guarded the blighted property program grant, which is again the driving force why we did this. Whereas the city adopts Title 53 of the PA Consolidated Statutes Concerning Neighborhood Blight, Reclamation, and Revitalization, which is Act 90, agrees to update current city ordinances to meet statutes as they change. Therefore, it resolves the city of Sundar as in compliance through the following ordinances that comply with Act 90, which is Chapter 107, 130, 131, 134. So we passed this, and we don't need to pass that, like I said, that big 18 page thing. Pretty much just what the county needs for us to get our $30,000. $42,000?
Yep, something like that.
Second?
Reichtner?
Yes.
Henry?
Yes.
Ister? Pristine?
Yes.
Shipman?
Yes.
Uh, pay raise of the county's payable clerk, John.
Uh, we have a, a, Traders Office has requested a raise for the county's payable clerk. Um, she's done a good job, been here for a while, and so I make a motion that we approve the Traders' request for pay raise for the county's payable clerk.
The money budget?
Uh, it's in, yeah, send it away.
Henry?
Yes.
Ister? Pristine?
Yes.
Shipman?
Yes.
Reichtner?
Yes.
By the way, John, welcome. Thank you for going after first meeting, so thank you, Mayor. Uh, approval of paying voices, John?
Uh, we have $99,342.72 of general fund expenses to disperse, and $4,267.98 of liquid fuel funds that we need to disperse. Uh, these are to pay discounts bills. Uh, I make a motion that we approve those invoices.
Ister?
Yes.
Pristine?
Yes.
Shipman?
Yes.
Reichtner?
Yes.
Henry?
Yes.
Okay, before we get into Edison Enterprises, are any audience comment on anything particular?
Mayor, I would ask that you take action to approve that allocation of program income, please.
Do you want to do that right now?
Yes, do that right now. Program income allocation, 414750, the demolition?
I'm making a motion to take Jamie's recommendation to $4,147.50.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Pristine?
Yes.
Shipman?
Yes.
Reichtner?
Yes.
Henry?
Yeah.
Ister?
Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay, audience comment, anything particular? Yes, sir. All right, go ahead.
Just quickly, um, I review the minutes quite a bit.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Because I'm jandocking.
Okay.
Um, you know, worry, I don't say this. But anyway, um, no, as of last week, there's nothing posted since April of last year.
Oh, we don't know why.
Online, for the minutes for these meetings. The last one was April 22nd, 2013. Are they, am I missing them in there somewhere?
I don't, I wouldn't.
It just haven't been posted.
No, anybody who wants to be asked can come, most people just walk in the city clerk's office.
It just haven't been posted.
Okay, because I can't always get to the meetings, and I kind of like to review.
But you always stop at the city clerk's office and get a copy.
Yeah, I can do that.
We'll get them on the website.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Dave, Ron Craig. When I had called you about with parking up on the hill?
Yes, sir.
Everything I've ever done to my property, I have gotten, uh, the okay from the city. Got my permits, I've done everything. Uh, properties grandfathered in. Okay, now, I have properties to my one side at 77 and 79 that are now purchased by Ideal Housing from Shamokin Dam, who is to, with the last administration that was in here, had voted to make it a law that you had specifically one and a half parking units per apartment or per address. Nothing's getting done. I got a Keystone house to my left side at 1273, who has a three-car private parking. The city had come up two years ago, had made an additional parking unit, just one, what they could do by moving the yellow a little further up. Now Keystone has brought a van up that they say that they're using for patient transfer. It's not for patient, it is for patient transfer, but it's so they don't have to pay their employees to use their vehicles for mileage or anything, so they can cut their pay. Keystone has a business office over on Arch Street. They can keep that there. They can park their vehicles out back, but they don't do it. Mr. Andrew Leverage is at Wit's End, he would be here tonight, but he's in Florida. Mr. Keeler on Ridge Avenue, it's the same thing. We can't do anything.
What address is this Keystone house on?
1273.
What street?
Highland Avenue. Now, this is in no way whatsoever about patients. Patients are fantastic. Now, you're saying, well, why are you, why are you saying anything about this now? They come in there 25 years ago with the agreement that they would use this. Do you understand what I'm saying?
No.
And now they don't.
Where's these three parking spaces at, off, off the street?
Off-street parking, three private off-street parking places.
Are they using them, or are they arguing?
Excuse me?
They're not using them?
No. I was told specifically, we don't want to, the boss said we don't have to. Now, this may not mean anything to anybody here, but it means something to us up on the hill. We are being inundated with rental properties. Ideal rented one out to one woman. She now has three other individuals that moved in with her. They all have a vehicle. They have their friends, they all have vehicles. Nobody is doing anything that the last administration had said would happen. And I say, I say that again, going back to the permits with things being grandfathered in. When these premises were sold, it was after. This was brought in by council. So it's not something that was grandfathered in, because I was told specifically by the individuals here being Mr. Bratigan, uh, Abdullah, or however you said his name, who was with city council. When I had problems with renovations that I wanted to do, it, I was told specifically, when you bought your premises, you lost your grandfather. So I can't understand how we're being inundated with all these rental properties and nobody is doing anything about it when it's supposed to be done. We need some relief up on the hill.
Let's take one thing at a time, because you keep referring back to, I'm not sure you're talking about the rest of it, but you have a, you have a property at 1273 Keystone House?
Right.
Highland Avenue, has three off-street parking spaces?
And don't use them.
And they could use them. So the question is, can we force them to use those? Because the cars that they're parking are licensed vehicles that are parking in the streets, correct?
Right.
I don't know.
But their employees.
Call the street, anyway, they can park it.
Yeah, but their employees in a residential area. Now, here's where it gets sticky. Their employees. None of those patients drive a vehicle. This is a business, a bona fide business that is being run. This isn't just somebody, you know, me renting to, to somebody else. This is a business in a residential area. Now you say, well, it's a residential business.
If Mr. Miller had a business on, on Market Street, and his employees wanted to park on Market Street, I don't think we could stop them.
No, what you do is you put the money in the meter, or you ticket them.
Right. I'm just, I'm just trying to think how, what would we have an effect that we'd be... Ron, how long's this Keystone been there?
23 years.
I'm sorry, would you give me your name again, please?
Ron Craig.
Craig? The, uh, the Keystone property, um, where is that located on Highland? Is that down?
Right on the top of the hill. It's the only single house on the hill besides myself and Mr. Andrew Leverage.
Okay, are the same site as, as Andrew Leverage?
No, catting owner from Mr. Andrew Leverage.
Okay. Are they actually taking any patients there?
Sure.
Are they?
Sure.
Ron, just to back you up a little, there are also a Keystone home on Edison Avenue in the 800 block, and they do the exact same thing. They have off-street parking, and they do not use it. It's the same thing.
Now, I wouldn't be here at all. Like I said, this is, this is, I've been there 26 years. And this was always not an issue. They always parked there. Now all of a sudden, it's like, oh, go to hell. You know, and it's not fair to me, it's not fair to the neighbors, this is a business.
We'll, we'll definitely look at it. I, I just don't know right now, sitting in front of us, I don't know. Gee, I don't know what law we would have to force them to go park there.
I'm trying to remember what, I remember they did have stuff they changed for how many parking spaces you have. Like, don't know if the ordinance forced them to park there. Did, did you talk to the manager of the Keystone?
I might have, sure.
Who's, is it the same manager?
No. No, this, this is totally different.
Well, why, why do you say they don't want to park there? Nobody parks there all day long?
No. Why they don't want to park there, they don't want to walk up three steps.
They go around behind the alley?
Who's the manager?
I don't know.
Who's, who's the last guy you talked to?
Who is the woman, Sherry?
Sherry Wolf?
She had the house. I mean, this is flat out ridiculous.
Well, it is, and I agree with you, Ron, and we'll see what we can do. I just don't know right now what laws we would have. If they're parking, I mean, we can't stop anybody from parking registered licensed vehicle on the public streets. And, and, but we'd have to look into the, I don't know, code or something. We'd look into see how we can go back and say, listen, you got these, you have to use them.
I, I don't know that we can make them use them, we can, we can ask if they would recommend it to employees use them. But I don't know sort of that, uh, what, like you said, we can't eliminate any, anybody from parking that has a, a legal licensed vehicle from parking on a street.
When these people come in, they made it perfectly clear that parking would not be an issue.
Well, that's why, that's how they got to...
Now it is an issue. And, and that is something that, it may not mean anything to anybody here.
Although it does, I think we all live in the city.
But it means something to us.
There's none of us living in the city that don't have parking issues, we don't care where you live.
And, and when you have now a company van, that you're just gonna park? Another house may come and pick the van up, put their car there, leave, take their van? You know, it, it's not fair to any of us.
Well, I live right around the corner, and I know the problem, so we'll see what we can do.
I appreciate it, that, that's all I'm asking.
Can you say it's Keystone Services?
Yeah.
They have a couple, they have a couple places in the city. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Hi, I'm Scott Schwartz. I've been coming here for about three months, feral cat issue. I'll have a town last meeting, my daughter came in March.
Your daughter came to talk to us?
Yes. I don't know, I, I look around and I see other municipalities attempting, in many cases, to do something about the feral cat issue. I just don't know that I see any progress. And, I mean, if there's something I can do to, um, help move this forward, I think I'm happy to do it.
We told your daughter at the last meeting
Okay.
that we would definitely look into this, and at least look at, but we're, we're still back to the same thing. Unless, I have no legislation to put forward, because I reviewed that thing from Northumberland, where I think I could memorize some of it. And I know they tried to get out throughout Northumberland County, couldn't get any support on that either. It's just, as I said originally, it's just something, it's unenforceable, and I don't see how we could, I could force anything. And, and all this council sitting in front of you has the opportunity to present something, if they want to present something. I don't see anything that we can do to make it any better for your daughter or anybody else. And we all have the neighbor, we always have, we all have issues with the mulch in the summertime with the cats. And I'm not gonna sit here and tell if I'm a cat person or not, a cat person has nothing to do with it, but, uh, I, I don't see what the city can do to regulate it. I personally don't see that.
I think that, no disrespect, I mean, I think that's kind of a cop out, quite frankly. You know, there's many ordinances that are very difficult to enforce, but the presence of the ordinance, I think, uh, at least puts a little bit of teeth behind it if there's a unique situation that needs to be enforced. I mean, I think it's pretty simple, no outdoor feeding of cats. You know, when you enforce that, she has an issue, you call the enforcement officer, the police, and then they're fined monetarily. And, I, I, pardon me, but I forget the gentleman, the, the man back there. This situation may not mean something to everyone in the room, but if you could next door to this situation, it's not a catter situation. It's like living in a litter box. I mean, that's not fair for anyone. Anyone who thinks taxes in the city, I, I just, I mean, there's many laws and ordinances you can't truly totally enforce, but in special situations, you're able to at least improve the situation. So I don't, I don't understand this thing about not being able to enforce it.
Okay, that's just my reason for not supporting you. Is this about this situation?
Yes, this is, this is about this situation.
Give us your name.
Uh, my name's Drew Benham. Um, I want to speak to this issue. I, I think this gentleman here is very passionate about this issue, and the first thing he says is if there's anything he can do on this issue, I think there's a lot he can do on this issue. And I think this is not an issue for council to deal with. I think this is an issue that if he's passionate about this issue, that he and a group of other people, other citizens, um, that are passionate about this issue can take action on this issue. And then I think council and city government should stay out of the way and let the citizens take action on it. If they want to get together and cap, and round up and capture, live capture a bunch of these cats and have them spayed and neutered, um, city council should let that happen. And by all means, sir, go ahead. Um, that is something you can do, and that will help the problem. But, but you don't need council to do that, and we don't need council spending our tax dollars on this problem. Why is that any different than his issue with the parking? I, I don't understand why, why you can separate or distinguish between those two issues. I think if it's a situation that negatively impacts somebody with a... Because his issue is not, he has a very specific issue with one, one particular person. Can I finish or no? You're not gonna let me finish?
Well, we're not gonna have a debate amongst the neighbors, so he has his viewpoint, I'll give you a closing statement.
I, I don't think you should separate the two issues. I think it's certainly enough, I think it's obvious. If somebody's outward feeding cats and attracting feral cats where there's colonies, where it affects their daily lives, I think that's an issue for council as a resident of Sundar. I don't see how it's not, and I don't see any way to distinguish it between the other issues that are brought up. Many people in this room were affected by it as well. Certainly not everyone, but when I first started coming to the meetings in October, roughly one-third of the people came up to me after the meeting and said, we have that issue too. So it does affect the masses. I'll tell you what, I'll, I'll give you that I can't, I wouldn't necessarily distinguish. I mean, I am the chair of the Libertarian Party in Northumberland and Snyder County, so I won't necessarily distinguish. So I'll give you that.
Okay, all right, here's what we're gonna do. Is there anybody in this council that wants to present legislation concerning this situation that we do have?
Dave, before you, excuse me.
Yes, sir.
Ron Craig. Before you do that, there is an organization that does pick up cats. I can't think of the name of it right off the top of my head, but I will get it for you. They pick them up and have them spayed and neutered.
Sun cats?
Cats, feral cats, cats that are just abandoned. They pick them up, they pay to have them spayed or neutered. Now, I may be part of this gentleman's problem, because being where I'm located on the hill at the stop sign, people throw cats out. There's freezing temperatures, so what I do is I have boxes on my front porch. They're called triple boxes, so these animals don't die. You know what I mean? And I don't like to do it, because it keeps the cat coming around, but I can't see them dying. But there is an organization that does it at no cost to the city. They pick them up, they have them spayed, neutered.
I know they used to do that, but this, what we've been told is that there's no funding for that anymore, so... That's the side point, we, like I said, we don't wanna, it's a situation, but, yes.
There's something else that I had come across, and I didn't have the opportunity to bring the material, because I seen it, I had pretty heard it. Uh, but there is a mobile, um, spayed and neutered veterinarian out of, I believe it's the Wilkes-Barre area. The closest I've seen that they've arrived at is Bloomsburg. But they do have a, um, an invitation, if you will, an email that says that if you would like to host our mobile vehicle to come to your area. Again, I didn't have an opportunity to look through the whole thing. But if they come as close as Bloomsburg, perhaps maybe Danville, Riverside, Point Township, Sundar could partner together and maybe get them down this far if somebody wants to do spay and neuter.
Well, I mean, you can get information for it, see what the cost is, what you have to do. They supply the traps, you, the city have to trap them, or how does that work?
It sounds very similar to the, our organization that came up from the Harrisburg area, from what, right quickly, that would be like at the Rescue Show Company or at the Number Ones in Northumberland. It sounds very similar. But I will get the information for the next meeting, it will be here.
Is there anybody up here that wants to do anything right now?
Not to see what we can do, but here we have Ron complaining about this parking issue, which I'm sure he does. Now we find out he's harboring wild cats, okay? You're a criminal, but anyhow. And I can see you're coming from, I have a neighbor has a cat from over in the yard, but the enforcement is the hassle. And I think if we can take, I think, Mike, didn't you go down and talk to the young lady down on South Forest Street, the folks that had the, had these cats?
Yeah, I was with Joe.
Joe, okay. And yeah, they did talk to the neighbor, I'm not sure who it was. But, uh, I think somewhere along the way, we'd have to try and do something. And maybe take them off to Ron's house and... Oh! And here again, I appreciate what you're doing though, Ron, because I don't see the animal freeze out there either. You know, it's just a bad situation. And people want the money, they can get them all spayed. And, uh, it's, you know, trying to rescue as many as you can, it's the litters that keep creating the problems, so... I think we should still try to address the issue instead of just passing it off.
Well, maybe when Mr. Bruce goes back with an answer, maybe there'll be some kind of a solution something. That's all, we can just keep looking for things like that.
But sun cats also do that as well for, if you're in a certain bracket of, um, income, that they do it in the Commonwealth Union.
Audience comment, anything else?
Yeah, I'm coming to you. Sorry about that, I got involved a couple things here.
I think, by the way, you were quarter, I have to pay you then before I leave, before I get arrested. Right now, I have to pay you. Now, the first thing we did talk about, uh, Terry Marshall.
Pardon?
Terry Marshall, glad to meet you.
Nice to meet you.
This is the property I was telling you about on the second, it's first street. Like you said, you were looking to, I don't know if you did or not, but I just wanted to give you some pictures to see if you'd like to go down and pay visit to it, or maybe have a contractor go in that knows about buildings, like someone like Preston Robbs, he does a lot of properties for you.
Yes, can I see your property?
No, it's not my property. It's a property that's an ice or...
Garmin building.
It's a Garmin building.
Okay, I like your talk on your property.
Well, we're, we're getting to that one there. I just received that information back there, had time to briefly read over it. So the bottom line is...
Sorry, just write second spruce, and that's we can give it to the redevelopment authority, go ahead.
So, concerning 239 spruce, with what I read back there, uh, I think it is. Concerning, plus, you know, we will let the large handle it, and mine is best in power. So, uh, we'll have to get in contact with Michael and see which way we want to go about this now. That's that I would give from the board, that's what I would do.
Okay, let's see where it ends up.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other audience comments? Yes, ma'am.
Could I just make a comment about this, um, could that be from somewhere else? It's kind of rude to look at somebody's back.
Well, we thought, but we wanted to, the intent was to get people up front so everybody could hear them. There's too many people talking back, they don't have the opportunity. This doesn't, I agree with you that this doesn't work either, and maybe we'll try something for the next meeting on the side or something. But we just wanted to get people, people have sat up here that they came here, people want to talk in the back. We don't have a microphone system in the room, so we're just trying to get people up front. But I understand, I agree with what you're saying, it doesn't, maybe off to the side, we'll try something.
Maybe get rid of the first two chairs or something, I'm not sure.
Okay, well taken. Any other comments? Yes, ma'am?
I just wanted to make everyone aware that the Spark Committee of SRI is currently working on refurbishing the planters along Market Street, so that we can hopefully, we've had some trouble with the current planters that we have, so they are looking for sponsors for the new planters. So if anyone is interested, please contact the SRI office, the new ones will have, it'll include the back, the new basket, the reservoir, a reservoir for water, as well as a bracket, mounting bracket for the plants. If anyone's interested, just give a call to the officers, stop by.
Are you having like a form or something, like you have, you have something like that made up? Or how, I mean, we get something out from the city clerk's office?
Sure, I can bring something.
Just bring something up, and more places we have distributed, the more opportunity to get to see.
Thank you.
What's the sponsorship level on the planters?
It's $200.
I wasn't saying that. Well, Michael told me. How many do we have right now on Market Street?
27.
Why wouldn't you?
Most of you are aware that the planters we currently have are lacking in their ability to retain water. So if we have, we don't, aren't able to water those every day, or at least every second day, the plants die very quickly. We were sold by the people that we originally bought these, that these were state of the art, but we have found out. The new planters have a two-and-a-half gallon water reservoir, which allows you to only water every third or fourth day, and they will, um... If you have ever gone through some other towns like Bloomsburg and so forth, and you have seen the planters hanging on the, on the light posts, and they're just a ball of color, that's what we've been trying to achieve for the last three or four years. Hasn't happened, but we, we're confident that the new planters will make a difference.
I make a comment on that?
Would you?
Dave Whitton. Waynesport has planters on Millionaire Grove. And they have somebody upstairs, I don't know who it is, whether the city does it, what, they have a golf cart. They take on sidewalks, and they reach up and they water the plants. Doesn't seem to be a problem there. Do we have anything like that available to us here?
Well, what we have is a city truck that has a watering mechanism on the back, and we have a great city crew that takes care of them. Our big problem is three-day weekends. We water it on Friday, we don't water it until Tuesday, by that time, they're dead.
That's right, ready for rain.
Ready for rain.
Every other day.
But it's a weekend, we don't buy it on a weekend.
So that's the issue, but yes, appreciate your comment.
Thank you, Megan. Anybody else? Okay, Brad, you out of the floor to talk about Edison Enterprises?
How you doing, Brad Neiman? Would like council to pass a resolution that would allow us to bring a restaurant liquor license in the Sunbury municipality, I'm not harmful to the exact. We want to put it at three-eighteen Market Street, I don't know how else to identify the building, it's right beside the Chinese restaurant, used to be the Two Old Guys Flower Shop. Do you remember the location?
Yes, here.
Okay. We want to use the entire building, um, it's going to be more of a, a cafe, wine bar. We're going to have live entertainment, dancing, food, a warehouse, yeah, we want to use the entire building. We'd also like, uh, council to approve an outdoor seating on the sidewalk. It's a smaller sidewalk, twenty-one by thirty, I think, and then there's a five feet for a grass bed. You know, rather get it all done at once.
And what's, what kind of timetable we talking about? For the summer, or?
As far as with the outdoor seating?
No, as far as, uh, opening?
Opening, uh, I think I have to have the license completed by the end of the year, which means, you know, by spring.
Dave, I got this, I don't know, I don't know if Ron, I got the email, but I didn't get it till right after lunch. Unless the things change, I don't know what the liquor control board's regulations are for each, for one property to another. You know, ours taverns, now, at one time you couldn't have another tavern, but the other taverns had to agree if you were within somebody's foot.
If, if you're, if you're within somebody's feet, another tavern, they can file a thing with the liquor board, but that doesn't really, with the municipality or...
Yeah, if we would give, if we would grant this, then it would be up to those other people.
Oh, absolutely, this isn't an end-all, if the license is going to transfer, this, this is needed so the liquor control board can say, okay, Sunbury will let it there, now we'll do our investigation. And that's where they make sure that we follow all the rules, meet all the guidelines, certificate of health, um, all that. Check for churches, playgrounds, parks.
One quick question.
Sure.
Does it just park in there?
Well, fortunately, we're on Market Street.
You didn't answer my question.
Okay.
Now, you called me last week about the other parking situation, discussed it this evening, but now we didn't address it here.
Well, this is the three-hundred block, I was talking about the four-hundred block.
Well, let's start about the three-hundred block.
Okay.
Where's the parking?
Market Street, other side, behind, uh, the pizzeria.
But how comes it's critical up there, but not critical down here?
It's critical both places.
Thank you.
Does this building go all the way to the, to the alley, or?
Well, I'm not prepared to do anything tonight, because I just now, I picked up my package and I learned this. But I'd like to have some more time to look at this and research it before I do anything.
I don't know, I mean, like I said, I, I, if the solace is this, I don't have a problem with it, but I do know that I, when, I, when I had my board, I had to go through a council meeting here, variance for all parking, and have the whole nine doors because of, um...
Well, since it's on Market Street, it's not flyer.
Right. And those days, those days it was transfer things, now, you can transfer anywhere, the whole county of...
No, I'm not talking about that, I'm talking about, to be able to open up, I had to get a variance for all street parking.
The thing, that has changed it.
Okay.
He's not going to be, this, this is doing nothing more than saying, all we're doing here, Dale, is just saying that we, we okay this, so he can go to the liquor controller, it has nothing to do with it.